I called to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council this Tuesday, February 4th. Uh Andrea, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Bybee.
Present.
Councilmember Heinz.
Present.
Councilmember Schizola.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fertado.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Thanks much. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public, for which we stand unconditionally, in this little little little.
Thank you so much. So today we have no special presentations and proclamations. Um for communications and petitions, um we have one written communicate uh communication on a non-agendized item which was received by Adam Bookbinder and it's been included with the public agenda packet online. Um before we get uh um to oral requests, I I just wanted to address a a a topic on um which we're not gonna have full discussion as as it hasn't been um uh uh agendized and so um I I'm 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 speaking for for myself, but I've received a number of questions from from many residents um who are concerned about the actions going on at this time uh and uh and the uncertainty around uh immigration. Um and uh given our values as a community, I just wanted to share um in conversation with um C staff and and with our police department, uh just some information. Um one which is that the Campbell Police Department's primary mission is to ensure the safety and security of all members of our community, regardless of immigration status. Our focus and commitment is on preventing crime, responding to emergencies, fostering a safe environment for everyone in Campbell. I also want to share um as as I've shared with community members who reached out that the Campbell Police Department follows California state law, including the California Values Act, uh which is SB fifty-four, which sets clear guidelines on the role of local law enforcement and immigration matters. Local law enforcement agencies, including Campbell PD, do not conduct immigration enforcement as that is the responsibility of federal agencies. Um so I I just wanna um be be really clear and I I I'm discussing um with our staff having uh more information out in an appropriate uh manner, but wanted to share that information given the the questions that we've received. Um and just speaking in a personal capacity to say um that 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 I stand with with the immigrant uh the community that uh we are welcoming community here in Campbell um and and that this is a a a part of our values. I encourage anyone to continue to reach out with other questions or concerns because um we we are here to help and and support um our our community. So with that said.
Mayor, I couldn't concur with you more.
Thank you very much. Um with that said, um are there any um members of the public that would like to speak on any items not on tonight's agenda? Yes, please. Uh yes, please, if if you will, for for items not on the on on the rest of the agenda. Sorry, would you mind turning on the, just press the little microphone icon?
There we go.
Thank you.
My name is Rhonda Noon and and I live at eight fifteen Maryland Drive here in Campbell. And what I wanted to address was having the city call off the weed abatement that I'm getting harassed from from Santa Clara County.
So I'm 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 so sorry to interrupt you. I believe that this, that you're speaking on an item. Um let me make sure of the right number. Um item nine, um so we'll we'll be coming up and we'll pop the public speaker, so um uh we'll be getting to that shortly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'm not seeing any other members of the public.
There was one in the back.
Oh, yes, please, um feel free to come on. This is for items not on the rest of the agenda for oral requests.
Go go ahead and uh the button in front, the red.
Little microphone icon in the on the side if you can, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, council members. We know how important bees are. Campbell prides itself as the orchard city and bees play no smart, small part in pollination. Yet the honeybee population is in a serious decline with an estimate forty percent of bee colonies dying annually. Urban beekeeping has gained popularity in recent years and we must encourage responsible beekeeping practices to help Campbell's vital bee population thrive. The current ordinance it dictates that no one can keep bees within three hundred feet of any road or a thousand feet from any residence without consent. These requirements make beneficial beekeeping practically impossible for residents. When we spoke to the city code enforcement officer, they said that only two properties in all of Campbell could legally keep bees per the city's ordinance. The two of us have hives in our backyard and we greatly benefit from the convenience of being able to check up at them basically whenever we want. When I finished my AP calculus exam two years ago, I actually found, I actually came back home just as my bees were beginning to swarm. And this allowed me to quickly respond to this threat and help my hives men keep being strong. If instead the hives were somewhere else and I might not even have realized that such a thing could have happened to my hives and that would have left them severely weakened or even dead. Our founder um and our founder and her father, uh we actually, we're we're part of the bee initiative. Our founder and her father uh who lived in Campbell had their hives evicted last year and that was basically the end of their beekeeping efforts. Every single one of their hives has died since then. It's not like there are people, there aren't people in Campbell who are interested in urban beekeeping. We have given presentations to um people, to uh elementary school students at the Harker Lower School, which is right on the border of Campbell, and we've seen how excited they've been when it comes to matters such as beekeeping. During one of our um during one of Campbell's farmers markets, we set up a booth and through word of mouth, uh we've been able to reach over three hundred people who have signed an online petition in order to help change the ordinance.
Um be- because we have two speakers, we, I think we can allow up to one more minute, I would, if if you wanna.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through uh yes, uh through word of mouth, um we've already uh reached over three hundred people who have signed this online petition and currently we're working with the Santa Clara Beekeepers Guild in order to help um find places where we can make revisions on this one. In recent years, cities around the Bay Area have gradually begun relaxing their bee ordinances. Campbell residents and beekeepers agree that this is a very critical issue and we strongly urge Campbell to reconsider its ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And um if you haven't already, I'd encourage you to share um your information with our city clerk um and we can ask staff to
Be caught.
Well, great, yeah, if you can share that and I'll just say as as a undergraduate member of the Yale Beekeeping Association, I look forward to hearing more.
Thank you so much.
Um so with that said, I think that wraps it up for uh oral requests. Um let's go on to council announcements. Um and and um the mayor, start with the mayor's announcement. Oh, I'm sorry, Elliot, go ahead, please.
Uh I just wanted to take a moment. I know we can't have a full discussion, but uh this is something that's uh I've been aware of for at least a couple of years and we do have a lot of antiquated uh ordinances when it comes to beekeeping, so I also would uh say that maybe this is something that we could bring to staff and look into this uh further because it's something that's come to my attention over the last couple of years, so. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks much and and sorry I missed you.
Oh, no worries.
Great. Um so we'll move on to the mayor's announcements. Thank you. February is Black History Month. Black History Month is an important time dedicated to honoring the achievements, history, and contributions of African Americans. It's celebration of resilience, creativity, and significant black individuals who have made uh uh the significant impact that black individuals made prosperous fields such as literature, science, music, politics, and more. It's also an opportunity to educate ourselves and reflect on the ongoing struggles um for racial justice uh and and equality. Uh the Civic Improvement Commission is excited to announce the launch of its youth photo contest, Capture Campbell. Capture Campbell encourages its youth to capture what Campbell looks like through their eyes. The contest runs January first through April thirtieth. To find out more, please visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. Spread the love at Campbell's forty-eighth annual Valentine five K wander on slash walk on Saturday, February eighth at nine AM. Don't delay. Get registered in advance to receive your free race shirt and medal. For additional information or register, please visit campbellca.gov. And uh for those who participate, I'm sure you'll see members of Campbell uh staff and perhaps the city council uh running alongside you. Celebrate the Year of the Snake with entertainment and dinner for adults fifty years and up on Sunday, February ninth from five to seven PM at the Campbell Community Center. The cost is twenty-five dollars per person. The last day to purchase tickets is February uh fourth, so I still got a few hours. For more information, please visit campbellca.gov slash adult center. For one hundred and thirty-three years, the Campbell community has celebrated its earliest origins and the people who have made the Orchard City a reality. Join us for the Campbell Early Settlers and Heritage Day Luncheon on Monday, February seventeenth from eleven AM to two PM at the Orchard City Banjo Hall at the Community Center. Enjoy a delicious meal and celebrate the heritage and people of Campbell. For more information, please visit campbellchamber.net. Be our guest. Visit the Campbell Community Center on Saturday, March first from ten AM to one PM to learn about classes and camps available to uh uh available and to meet instructors and camp leaders. Enjoy STEM activities, live music, and cone ice. To sign up, go to campbellca.gov slash aquatics. Please also join us for the Campbell Preschool Open House at the Campbell Community Center on Saturday, March first from ten AM to twelve PM. Preschool registration opens March eleventh for residents and March twelfth for everyone. To find out more, please visit campbellca.gov slash recreation. The the AARP Foundation is providing free income tax assistance through Friday, April eleventh at the Campbell Community Center's Adult Center. This service is available for low to moderate income adults and families ages eleven and up. Please visit campbellca.gov for more information. And finally, I'll just share, as we shared at our last council meeting um this Saturday, ten AM to four PM is the Cloud City Third Annual uh Blood Drive in partnership with the Stanford Blood Center. Um and this will take place at the Campbell Community Center Roosevelt Room uh at at the uh uh at at the community center um and again from ten AM to four uh PM. Hope to see you there. Um so with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar, which is uh routine matters which will be enacted um by one motion unless uh council staff or member of the public wishes to pull them. Are are there any council member staff or uh members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull four and five.
Four and five, great. Um so um with that, do we have a motion, a second for one through three and six through eight?
Second.
Uh motion by Schizola and second by uh Bybee. Can we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fertado.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye. Thank you. Um so that takes us now to um item four, which is the monthly investment transaction report. And I I don't think we have a staff presentation. Councilmember Heinz, do you have a a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on uh that specifically I'm looking at uh the packet page twenty-six. I had a couple of questions that uh Finance Director uh Will Fuentes uh I answered for me and I just want to as our responsibility as city council, we have a fiduciary responsibility uh to oversee um these financials. Um and I just wanted to share the information that I passed on that uh he very successfully answered. Uh first of all, on page twenty-six Chandler assessed um is the asset manager, their consultant. Um I was asking who is the fiduciary and that was the Bank of New York. Do I have that right? Okay, uh the banking New York, New York is the fiduciary, obviously very successful in that. Uh and I also wanted to point out that uh all of the bonds are held either as AAA or US Treasury uh which are very solid and safe. And then the the main question that I had asked was uh on the page twenty-six, it shows a loss of two hundred K off of the portfolio. Uh that's uh obviously would be significant, but it is a uh um it's a market number, not a book number. Uh the and the uh funds will go to uh maturity and uh there will be a sold and maturity. So um he had successfully answered those and I very much appreciate him on that. And uh with that, I I so moved to approve uh item four.
I'll second.
Thank you. Um we have a motion and second. Can we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fertado.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to item five, which is the monthly uh treasurer's report and uh Councilmember Heinz, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mayor. On the page forty-eight, uh under the discussion, uh there were some numbers that uh were uh Director Fuentes was trying to summarize, but then gave uh uh some information that I think would be uh confusing. And uh with showing that there was a revenue increase six point eight million uh with the expenses of five twelve point seven million, uh which was a net loss of five point nine million, but the increased uh of the funds went to two point four million. He has subsequently provided me with uh more detail on that. Uh and I would encourage the city clerk to include that detail in the uh in the minutes uh because that then lines out each uh uh each number uh to do that and I can provide city council with the his description uh that gives that. So uh and that successfully took care of my concern on that. On the on the second point, a similar question about the uh the general fund, uh which again, uh it's our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that uh we are following uh the use and proper balance of the general fund. Uh and again, it was a similar question, similar summary of numbers that uh to me didn't make sense. Uh he again has provided a uh a much more detailed line item that answered my question. Uh so thank you, Dr. Director Fuentes, uh for that, very, a very thorough, very complete and uh allowing me to uh um continue with my uh feeling of fiduciary responsibilities. With that, I so move to uh approve uh item five.
And you do have a second?
A second.
Thanks much. Uh motion and second.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fertado.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye. And uh thank you, Councilmember Heinz, for um for for that. Um that moves us now to to item um item nine, right? Um item nine, which is the public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution directing the community development director proceed with abatement of hazardous vegetation. And uh thank you of a uh presentation from Rob, community development director.
Evening, Mayor Lopez, council members, Rubius, community development director. Uh the council will remember this item was before you at your last meeting on January twelfth. Uh this is a meeting to uh hear potential objections from property owners regarding the weed abatement program. Weed abatement program is overseen by the county under agreement with the city. At your last uh meeting, you'd take testimony from a number of property owners. Uh you also took testimony from the county program manager who's here tonight, uh Gary Loselleski, if I got his name correct. Uh at that meeting, you did continue to hear and allow the program manager to meet with those property owners, try and um work through any outstanding issues. You also directed uh staff in the county to renotice for this meeting. Uh so tonight, the item is back before you. Uh the county program manager is here tonight. He has reported that he has put out notices for this meeting that were published uh earlier this month and that he has worked with the property owners that came to this meeting. As a result, uh there is a revision to the list of those uh to be listed on the debate and program. I believe two have been removed. Uh and with that, uh the item is back before you tonight uh to consider any additional objections as as it may be. The program manager here is tonight. I advise if you do adhere objections from property owners, allow the program manager to address those and extend the council's discretion to adopt the weed abatement list as presented or as modified and pursue with the abatement. Uh I have no additional questions. In addition to Garrick, we also do have our current coaching officer, uh Randy Sweet here as a resource. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um do we have any uh before we get to discussion, do we have questions from the council? No, I I don't see any. Um what I will now do is open the public hearing on this item. And um if there's anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item, uh oh, I'm getting some parts, so I'll read these out first and um if you'd like to um speak, please feel free to either come up or fill out a speaker card afterward. Um but first, we have um Bob Doherty. We'll have uh two minutes for this.
Sure.
Two minutes for for comments.
Yeah.
Uh I'd like to just add a little information to the staff report. They gave you a little more detail than we had last time around. Um uh March second, I took a look at the photographs, staff took thanks to the staff providing them to me. I can't tell you how high the grasses were. They weren't very much over six inches, in my opinion. Also, in my opinion, that grass was way too wet to cut. And I I you you can't cut wet grass, my anyhow. It was cut a couple of weeks later. In my business, we we call that substantial compliance. And I think that you need to consider that as you're putting people on or off the list, especially third year I. Uh if this is the first year, maybe, maybe not. Um I've already killed all the weeds. Uh Friday, there was not a single live plant in my front yard, uh except for my comedians. If this rain continues through to the end of the month, that won't be true. Uh we'll have all kinds of things. So I'm asking you to take myself off the list because I don't think you have a good reason to believe that I'm not gonna take care of those weeds. I also want to add a little bit to twelve seven, twelve thirty-one Virginia Avenue. Those very nice ladies used to keep a absolutely beautiful trout tolerant yard. They then engaged in a project to improve their home at a cost of tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. Process destroyed their front yard and at one point they had some weeds. I have every confidence that these ladies were putting their yard back. She had great neighbors and I really think that they should be removed from the list because again, you don't have probable cause, you don't have some uh beyond a reasonable doubt, you don't have even a reasonable suspicion that these ladies are not gonna put a yard in in the next six to eight months. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other members of the public who wish to comment on this end?
Rhonda.
Uh.
Uh yes, please. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I uh maybe you wanna briefly give a little bit of a background of my experience with this. Uh me being a homeowner in Campbell, uh the day I got on this list, there was a person coming by and saying, hey, you know, I'll I'll put you on this list because your grass is too high. And I told them, well, uh I mean, I guess at that point, I didn't really know about what the exact rules and regulations were and he said, yeah, you're not compliant because your grass was too high and say, okay, well, I'm I'm gonna remove it right now. Uh and then he came back uh next day and then, yeah, it's been removed, but we put you on the list anyways uh because we weren't compliant. And then like, oh, this feels really uh what should I say? Uh I I'm actually, you know, one of the uh members in the city where uh if someone would come to me and say, hey, is this really serious? You need to remove this, I would totally do it. But in this case, there's uh you know, there's absolutely no way to actually uh be like really forward and saying, hey, you know, I I'm willing to remove all this grass uh because I wanna also be compliant. So there's a little bit of a complaint of this program, how it's being held and how people are being uh treated with it. So I uh since then, I am compliant and I'm still on this list, so I would also like to get up to this. So.
And um we we had and and would you be able to share your information with the city clerk as well to help us? Thank you. And yeah, if you if you wanna come up. Uh please feel free to come up. But did you wanna make a comment as well?
Yeah, um as I've stated earlier, it's about this um weed abatement thing. Just because of a what I'll call a nosy Nora down the street from me, took a picture of my front yard, sent it to the county, Santa Clara County, saying that I had too many weeds in my yard. For the past three years, I have been held and harassed by the county and taking care of these so-called weeds. Now I've done walks around my neighborhood in approximately two mile radius and there are a lot of shards that have weeds. Biggest shard that I've noticed that has these dead grass and weeds is Campbell's property on Virginia Street. Now, because I have fibromyalgia, two knee transplants, the new knee replacements. I've got arthritis in my lower back. My husband passed away seven years ago. I'm getting a little, you know, upset that I'm still getting these little letters from Santa Clara County about my weeds stating that if I don't take care of them, they will. In fact, they've had people come into my house that they have hired to try to cut down and take care of my weeds, which I do not have. It was just dead grass. Now, if I'm getting those, maybe the city of Campbell needs to take care of their own property on Virginia Street, which is a lot larger than the two, three house radius from mine, that has a larger problem. So I'm asking that, if you would please get me off of this weed abatement thing and quit having the city, you know, the county of Santa Clara harass me you know, twice a year over this.
Thank you um for your for your comments and and uh if you would also be able to fill out a a card, it would help our city clerk to to follow. Thank you. Um anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this end? Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Leah Knight. Um I was here last month um and also testified. I would like to have my name removed from this list. I don't feel that A, I had proper notification. Um I've only found out this year that our that our our my property had been on the list from twenty twenty-three. Was not aware of that, no records of having received any notification of it. The only first time I was aware of it was I got a letter from the city and I met with the code enforcement officer. Uh they said we did not have a problem. We are not out of compliance, thought it had all gone away. Then um a few weeks ago, I think I guess it was at the end of last year, I got another notice to destroy weeds. You know, this whole thing about going on the county program, was not aware that there were separate issues between the city and the county. Um we, after that meeting, we met with um the weed abatement officer. They came out also with the code enforcement officer, said that we were in compliance. We have removed all of whatever was subject to something like that. We maintain our property, we're continuing to maintain our property, really afraid that my 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 property, as well as anybody else who's on this list, is gonna be made available to the state insurers and, you know, I'm gonna lose my fire insurance because of this. Um and you know, when there is nothing that I'm in that I'm not in compliance with at this time. Um and um I I've also learned that there's it there's a very unclear and ambiguous um language um related to the grasses over six inches that that don't relate at all to native grasses, you know, which are encouraged to be planted for um drought tolerance reasons, things like that. So just, I would uh kindly request that uh my name be removed from this list.
Thank you. Uh do you have other members of the public wishing to speak? Yes, please.
Hello, I'm James Crowe. Um the number of fires has caught everyone's attention lately. They're uh very dramatic from uh Hawaii to Paradise to Los Angeles. The proxipic cause of all these fires is encroachment of development into wilderness areas. The immediate cause of all these fires has been down power lines and strong winds. Um there's also another crisis which we're dealing with right now, which is the affordability of insurance. These two are interacting in a very strange way. Um now, I believe that um the abatement program is identifying um properties with potential fire hazard. Insurance companies right now are also trying to collect information in a in a list of properties that um there they consider fire hazards. Now, I believe that the city and the county are doing a good thing by controlling, but they um are also imperiling the insurability of every house. Every house that's on that list has a very strong probability of losing its insurance. And um so I think that um they try to encourage um for uh voluntary cooperation, which we've which we've bent over backwards to cooperate. All we ask is what should be removed. But there's also the problem that it's easy to get on the list. It, it's impossible to get off. Someone came to inspect our property and said there was no violation. I said, if I hadn't removed these grasses down to six inches, would it have been a violation? He said, no, because that's not working out. It's not practical. Now it's suspended and it's being reconsidered. So it, it, it's ever changing. It's very, very chaotic. But I, I think that the program must keep in mind that it can encourage people to conform. But there's every day, there's in the paper, there's stories of people who are paying eight hundred for insurance. They now have to join the fair program. It's now eight thousand in insurance. And basically, the federal program is unfunded now. They, they've expended their, their funds. They would not be allowed to sell insurance in California if they were a private entity. I, I think that the, I, I've found the city to be very cooperative and understanding. But I think the county should keep in mind that they, they should encourage people to get off the list. But, but right now, I'm, I'm told you can't get off the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So at this time, I don't see other public commenters. Could we please have the program manager from the county up before we close the public hearing?
The last speaker, if you could fill out a comment card? So that we could get your address. Thank you.
Thank you. And?
Yeah. Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Garrick Eosilewski, I'm the manager for the weed abatement program for County of Santa Clara Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency. I'm happy to either respond to the comments that were made or answer any questions that they can make.
Why, why don't you start by responding to the comments and then if we have questions, we can, we can proceed with that.
Absolutely. So the first speaker, Mr. Bob Doherty. We already spoke to him after the last council meeting. We looked into his record, into the history of the property. He has been in compliance for the last two years that we've inspected him. So if he comes into compliance, if he is in compliance again this year, that would be three consecutive years, in that which point we would remove him from the program. A recent inspection also showed that it appeared he may have been working on the landscaping project that may potentially be preventing the regrowth of weeds. So if he can successfully show us that he's completed that project, we would be happy to remove him from the list without assessing any fees this year. For the second appellant, I did not get any information about their property. So I can't really look into the history or offer any of my recommendations as to what needs to happen with that property to, to bring it into compliance. But I'm happy to speak with them after the meeting and come get back with the city afterwards as well. And then the same goes for the third person who spoke. I didn't get their enough information to really be able to address their concerns at this time. For the fourth person who spoke, Leah Knight, we also did work with them after the last hearing as well. And we did see that based on previous year's photos from last year, there were some concerns for us. And we understand and appreciate that the property is now in compliance. However, we would like to see that continue to be in compliance during the fire season. And then as for the fifth speaker, the insurance situation is really a challenging one. And unfortunately, we can't control what the insurance companies do. But we believe that by doing this work and by being successful at preventing wildfires from spreading in our communities, that we could actually help properties be more insurable in Santa Clara County. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or go into further detail if more information is provided on those other two properties.
Thank you. Let's start with Councilmember Hines for questions at this time for, for Gary and, and Vice Mayor Fratato.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it very much. What's the appeal process that a homeowner would have? What's the steps that they would, that they would go through to get in and have an appeal?
Well, this is it right here. This public hearing is their process to come in and appeal to the city council of why they believe they should not be on the program. And it's up to the city council then to decide if it's appropriate to remove them. And I would have to uphold whatever you decide.
Thank you. Do you have a?
No, I make, I make.
Okay, Vice Mayor Fratato.
Yes. I feel that this is about the third year that I've sort of dealt with this as a council member. And I know we dealt with it before. And I really do think that our ordinance, the city ordinance on this matter needs to be revised. It's been badly outdated. But I have also heard complaints as well that once you're on the list, it's very difficult to get your name off. And, and I've heard several people mention that over the years. And somehow, I, I think we need to make that simpler. I don't like this idea of keeping people on this list for like three years in a row. I, I feel that if they comply, we should just take them off the list. And then if, if they're out of compliance, unfortunately, the following year or another year, just put them back on again. But I, I just don't like hanging on for year after year doing this. That's my personal opinion on this. And I've just heard a lot of complaints about it. I feel we need to, obviously, we're not going to revise it tonight, but we need to address this in the future and take care of it.
Thank you. And I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. At this time, I'll ask for questions for, for the program manager and then we'll come back for council discussion later. So, Councilmember Bobby.
But what is the pause? Why is the policy a three-year? Staying on the, on the list for three years? What, what, what's the significance of the three years?
Sure. So the previous manager who was in this position for over eighteen years, I've only been here for a couple of months now, and I've learned the program very quickly. But from what I understand from speaking with him, is that they've seen that in historically, when a property is in compliance for three consecutive years, they're much less likely to reappear on our list again in the future. Whereas if a property comes into compliance one year, then the next year, they can be out of compliance again. And then, you know, say they're on the program for two years in compliance, and then the third year, they're out of compliance. So typically, they've seen that there's a trend that if they show three years of compliance, that they're much less likely to re-attend because that behavior has now changed.
And is that policy dictated by the county? Who establishes that, that three-year limit?
My understanding is that that is a policy internally to our program. So that's just how we operate in the weed abatement program for the county. I couldn't really tell you the history of how that came to be necessarily. I don't know if it's backed by any legal requirement. However, again, as I explained, it's just that trend is typically when we see that properties no longer come back into violation.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember?
Thank you. Thank you. Just maybe let me try and ask my appeals question again. Just, I understand coming here is the appeal, but what's the review process that the county does? Is it on an annual basis, every property, on an annual basis? Or is it based on a property that has not been in compliance, gets re-reviewed? How, how do you reset the num, the properties?
Well, every year, we have our list of properties that we would go out and inspect. And then, you know, they have a certain number of years left on the program. So, for example, property first comes onto our program, they have to show compliance for three consecutive years, or they can come and they can appeal.
How do they get on the list?
How do they get on the list?
Yeah.
They can get on the list in one of two ways. Either somebody complains about the property and we start a service request. We go out to the property, we assess it. If we just determine it's a problem, then we add them to the list. Or if our inspector is doing their routine inspections in the field and they see a property that's not on our list and they see that there's an issue, then they'll add it that way as well. And typically, when we add somebody, we send them a letter letting them know that we're planning to add them for the next year. And then at that point, come December, January, we send them a notice. That's when it tells them about this hearing. Then they can come and appeal if they don't want to be on the program anymore. There's no real review that's done on our end to say, maybe we should take them off or not. That's up to the city council to decide if it's appropriate to do so. And I can offer my recommendations based on past history and past photographs that I've seen in our database. But aside from that, there's no real review year to year of if a property should remain in the program, aside from how long they've been in it.
And, and sorry for me not to be totally up to speed on the code associated with it. But you mentioned that there's a city code associated with this. And it, how is that relate to the county code? Just accepting, the city code just accepts the county code?
You'll have to forgive me. I don't know all the city codes at this point. I'm still fairly new in this position, but we do.
Sorry. Do you have staff who can respond to that particular question?
I'd love to know as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bill, do you want to jump in there or do you want me to?
Sure. There's a provision in, in Title seventeen, which governs our, basically sets forth fire code provisions, which provides for the basic process that, that comes before the council to establish weeds as a nuisance. Quick, put people on the list and then assess the costs for abatement of the list. There are, but as was mentioned by our gentleman from the county, the three-year period is not part of our ordinance that is, was established by the county.
So if, if I can jump in and all, also for our staff, just maybe just asking the questions that, that are here just in different way. If we as a city wanted to, to change it, whether it's, it's the number of years or some other aspect, could you walk us through a little bit what that process would, would look like and then what that agreement would look like with the county? I see community development director probably.
Chop and the municipal city attorney. So just two things. One, tonight, you have the option to make recommendations and decide for testimony.
I'm sorry to speak.
I'm sorry. I'll get closer to my. So you've heard testimony. You do have the option to remove some of the properties off the list. I know you've heard testimony and affirmation program manager, at least two of the properties do not have weeds this year. It's your discretion. You can remove those from the list tonight. Just on the properties over for you. For the program itself, it is on a work plan, a long work plan to, to look at the city's codes. But really what dictates the program are the policies that the county uses. We have, I know if you were here last, last year, there were a number of people who came last year, similar concerns. We did work with the prior program manager to do some adjustments. Right now, there's more due process. If you get notice, there's an opportunity for someone to go clear the weeds first, have the county go back and see if they are cleared before moving forward. Previously, we just moved right to the list, so that's an adjustment. I can commit to work with Garrick if there's additional adjustments, given it's the county's program and they've adjusted to work with Campbell in the past. See if there are adjustments, because I've heard the same, we've heard the same from many of our, our property owners. And I know our code enforcement officer has too, on the issue of putting, put on the list once and then two years of free of weeds, you're still on the list. I'm happy to work with Garrick to see if they can amend the program over the next year to shorten that, as the county has worked with us in the past. I'd say I know that the codes we have are, are old, but I think that the, the issues at play really are dictated by how the category is.
Thank you. Go ahead. Yeah, if you have more questions.
Yeah, just, so there are two properties that you've inspected that are present here that you feel have cleared the weeds?
At this time, yes, they, the weeds have been cleared and that's been verified by our staff within the last week or two.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor Fratato.
Yes, I have a question too. I, I think the, I think it's up to the city whether we want to continue to contract with the county. I mean, it's, we, we give permission because we are a sovereign city. So it's because we have decided to contract with the county that we're following the county rules. So I just want to make that real clear. We don't have to be a part of this program. We could develop our own program if we wanted to. No, I don't mean any disrespect to you, sir. In fact, you've been very helpful in answering individual questions and things like that. So I'm not in any way trying to, you know, put you down or anything like that. I, I want to thank you. And because you've specifically answered questions person by person, and I appreciate that.
I, I appreciate. And Garrick, I'm sorry, I, I got the name. Not seeing any questions at this time. I'll close the public comment, the public hearing. And we'll go to council discussion and, and we've started getting a little bit, a little bit of this in the questions. But I'll open up to any colleagues with any other thoughts. Councilmember Hines.
I don't want to go first again, but just, just a, a couple of comments on this that there are certainly many things that we're seeing in the, in the news associated with fires, associated with the, the, just the problem with fires. Along with that, the, the insurance programs are a bulldozer coming, coming as well. And so I think we want to be careful that we are able to respond to that. But I also feel that it's important for us to continue to support a, and have a program. And it, to me, it feels like the county program is very satisfactory. But we want to be able to get into a position where the, I think the three years is going to be a problem from a insurance standpoint. So I would suggest that for the, the two properties that are identified, that had cleared the weeds, that, that we uphold the appeal to remove them from the list. But continue with the, the program, the Santa Clara County program, because I think it's an excellent program for us to, to have. And I think it'd be difficult for us to take on a program like that from cost and, and people's standpoint.
Thank you. Do you have other comments? Councilmember Scazzola?
Yeah, I also have been, this is the third year now that I've been hearing about this as well. And it does seem to be an incredible nuisance, you know, more so than the weeds themselves for a lot of our community members. And this three years thing does seem to be one of the main problems. People come into compliance. I won't repeat it over and over again, but I think that's the main issue we have here is that, hey, look, I did the right thing. Thank you for pointing out to me. I did the right thing, but somehow I'm still being penalized for years after the fact. So I would hope that maybe we can do something where, with our own city staff. And yes, I know we have many, many things to do, but this seems to be something that there is a, a small outcry for. And I'd like for us to maybe refine things to a point where if someone's in compliance, they've proven this, that, okay, great. And we'll check next year. We'll check the year previous. And if they go out of compliance again, maybe there'll be, you know, bigger repercussions after the fact. But I, I, I don't like the idea of us penalizing such, such a harsh penalty for one thing that's maybe even in, in a lot of cases, arguably out of compliance. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Do you have other comments? Let, let me ask a question. I really appreciate the, but Garrick and our staff and, and just the attention to this for my colleagues. I, there, there's a, a couple of pieces. I, I, I'm hearing the, the thoughts and I'll weigh in a little bit about a, a little bit longer term, where we'd like to see the program go for, for tonight and for the appeals, just to get this on the table. We have two properties, ten seventy-eight Longfellow Avenue and seven thirty Chapman Drive. And Councilor Hines, if I understood you correctly, I think those are the ones that are recommended in the report to be removed from the list. Are those the two that you're referencing?
Yeah, that the county has reviewed and confirmed.
Okay.
That they've cleared.
So, so to put out there, and then there are three other properties that the, the program manager has not recommended removing at, at this time. I just want to finish my thought, but if I've misstated something, please jump in, otherwise I'll come back to you.
Sure. No, well, I just wanted to clarify that one of the addresses that you mentioned is not, I think Chapman Drive is not one of the two that came to appeal. The, the second one that came to appeal that our inspectors looked at and found to be in compliance currently is actually, I believe, is it Hazel? Yeah, so nine, nine zero four Hazel Avenue, that was one of the ones on our recommended list to keep on the program. But they were one of the ones who came to appeal tonight and.
I, 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 I understand. I'm, I'm sorry to, to cut you off, just to finish my thought. There are the, the, the two that are being recommended be removed, which as, as I said, was ten seventy-eight Longfellow Avenue and seven thirty Chapman Drive. Then there are three, and, and, and some of these individuals are, are, are here tonight, which are not being recommended to remove at this time. And those are twelve seventy Theresa Avenue, twelve thirty-one Virginia Avenue and nine oh four Hazel Avenue. And so I just wanted to lay that out to see if there are thoughts from colleagues on, for, for this action tonight, on how we proceed with two or three or all five of them. two or three or all five of them. Yeah, uh, yes, uh, please.
The first two that are on there, uh, that you're recommending be removed from the list to me is um, very straightforward, it's the other three properties that are listed in the report that are, that are in compliance but are gonna remain on the list for three years because that's what like, the, the county policy is, but it doesn't seem equitable or fair to to leave those three on when you're, when you're uh, removing the other two that are in compliance, so I may, I'm, I might be missing something.
Clarify why we're removing the first two?
Sure.
Uh, so one zero seven eight Longfellow was originally added to the list because they had dead tree material on their roof which is a fire hazard, they removed it since then and we don't see that reappearing uh, overnight like weeds might, so that's the reason we took them off because the hazard has been abated completely. And seven thirty Chapman, they actually landscaped their entire yard to prevent any weeds from regrowing, so um, because of the landscaping work they did, making it impossible for the weeds to regrow, that's why we, we removed them. Um, the twelve seventy Teresa, that's actually Bob um, Dory who spoke first, um, and then twelve thirty one Virginia and nine oh four Hazel, although they may be in compliance at this time, um, we, we consider them to still need to be a part of the program.
And, and I would be um, after hearing that explanation, I would be willing to um, suggest that the, the latter three remain on the list for a year but not for the three years, so, to make sure that they are in compliance. It, it just seems, having them on a list for three years does, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Thank, thank you, do you have other comments at this time, let me just, go ahead, Councilmember Scizola.
Yeah, I, I mean, honestly, because of all the confusion and how many times we've heard about this before and how many times people have as soon as they are aware of they're in compliance, they, they become compliant. I was looking at like full forgiveness, but I think that that is a, a nice compromise, one year just, okay, well, s- we'll stick a poker head in there every once in a while, how you doing, how you doing, okay, you're off the list, I, I could definitely uh, agree to that, I think there should be, uh, it does seem extremely harsh when people are in compliance and they're, they're put on this list for a long time, especially with these insurance concerns.
Thank, thank you, let's um, go to Councilor Heinz and then I might make that suggestion.
Yeah, I would, uh, uh, I would feel that uh, we should, if they have abated, if that's confirmed by this, by the county that uh, they could be removed from the list, they can always get put, put back onto the list. Uh, but I would uh, suggest that uh, uh, if they've abated it, if it's confirmed by the county, uh, that they, they could be removed by the list.
So um, I'll, I'll, I'll make one comment, which is that um, I, I think it's appropriate, as we've discussed and as, as staff has heard, um, let's, especially when you go into the budget discussions this year, we always know that there's trade-offs with, let's have time and priorities. Um, I'd ask to bring this back in for, for discussion at that time, please, you know, please take into account the comments that, that you've heard for a number of us tonight, and I'll, I'll just add that, um, I think we should look holistically in addition to the, the very valid concerns that have been brought up. If, if we're gonna modify the perhaps having a different or shorter timeframe as a city, how do we do so in a way, and it may not just be with this program, but that, that's what I'm asking to look at holistically, that we move ahead with other goals like fire prevention and, and um, uh, safety. Again, it may not be that in this program and the current structure that we're gonna try to do over the same way, but bring it back at, at that time, I, I think that's a later discussion. And um, if that sounds acceptable to my colleagues, um, I'll take a motion um, at this time based on some of the discussions, if anyone is willing to make that.
I, I have one question.
Yes.
Uh, additional question, what about the other property owners that spoke tonight that we don't know their addresses and they haven't been inspected, what, what, what do we do with those?
Can you, can you clarify a little which property owners, you, you mean the other ones on the list?
People that spoke tonight, tonight that didn't identify their property.
Oh.
And so they haven't been checked, they have, we don't know whether they're in compliance or not and they're asking to be taken off the list, so what do we do with those, those folks? Um, as well, so. If that, do they, does that need to be continued to, to another meeting so that we can inspect the property and then come back and say, yeah, you're in compliance, we can take you off?
Let me at this time see if there, maybe have staff answer that question, see if there's any thoughts on how to.
Well, I mean, ultimately, it's, you, you're the appeal body, it's the discretion of the council. Hearing for options before, you have two recommended to be removed from the list, you have three additional in their staff report to consider. Uh, you have two speakers tonight that had, got the properties identified that had been confirmed, see, there's evidence in the record. You could act on all of those, the, the additional ones, uh, you could do one of two things, um, move on to next year and allow those to come back, uh, to, I guess you could open the public hearing again and ask them to provide information. Ask the county program manager to provide information, or you could continue. This will discretion.
Yes.
Let me, let me try this, that, um, so there's, I think, five that have been inspected that are no longer uh, appropriate and then, uh, then have abated the program, there is two in question, do I have the numbers right? Yeah. 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 Does that, sorry, there's five that have been, uh, and then two in question, can we ask the county to uh, uh, inspect those two properties? And uh, uh, I guess what I'm proposing is to um, take the five off, uh, take the two off conditionally based on the county inspection. And then if the county agrees that the, uh, weeds have been abated, then they don't go on the list.
So just so I'm understanding the question, um, five of them we reviewed since the last meeting. You're moving to remove those from the list and then we would still go and inspect the two, um, the gentleman with the red shirt and the lady with the purple jacket, um, we would go out and inspect those and get back to you at the next meeting, is that, is that the question?
I don't, uh, I, I would say that it's based on the county's assessment, is what I would suggest. I would, I would suggest.
For our staff, is that something that we can, does that provide enough direction or would you need more from us to be able to look at that?
You, you could, I mean, I just wanna make clear, if the county goes back out, determines they remain on the list, the appeal process is over. Just wanna make sure that's clear to the council and clear to the, the speakers, but the direction to work with them, um, I, I think is, is heard, just clearly, if, if you close tonight, there would be no appeal process going forward for this year, they could come back next year and appeal.
So at this point, I think hearing what we've heard from staff and the feedback and, and that ultimately, the council is the, the appeals body and, and we've continued this all, all entertaining motion and then maybe we can just work, work off of that, see if we get a second and a vote.
Let me try, so, um, and somebody will have to read the, the addresses, but there's five that have been identified that uh, this, uh, the county has confirmed have abated the weeds. And that I, um, I propose that those be removed from the list. There are two in question, uh, that I would propose the county to um, go and make an assessment. And uh, based on that assessment, um, they stay on the list or they, um, if they have been abated, they get removed from the list, based on the county's assessment. And that's the motion that I'm proposing.
Thank you, and do you have a second?
A second.
Just, just for clarification, are you uh, moving ahead with the rest, with the resolution, the rest of the resolution the way it is and we're, we're amending it to to eliminate the five that are indicated in the staff report and have a reinspection of the property, other two properties that are here tonight to go off the list if, in the discretion of the county, if they have successfully completed their abating.
That is my, that is my motion, uh, to uh, therefore then accept the rest of the um, um, uh, of the agenda item.
That's the motion, the, the second, we have the roll, uh, clerk please. Vice Mayor Furtado is that.
Did you accept?
Yes.
I understand, thank you. Yes.
So, um, for the two other properties that need to be infected further, Bill, is there can we in the motion allow them an appeal if they're not, if, if they feel that the or don't, would it be another public, would, would we have to open the public hearing again tonight and continue?
Yeah, that, that would be the option to, would be to continue it, uh, if you wanted to give them another crack at the council, yes.
Thank you, and coun- uh, Councilmember Scizola, do you have a question?
No.
Thanks. Okay, so we have the motion and, and the, the second and just to be clear to the public and to not give our city attorney more heartburn, that's, that would not be a further opportunity for an appeal with the motion as it stands on the floor. If i- it's conditional on, on the county at this point.
And then just for clarification for me, the five properties are the, the properties that are listed in the staff report.
In the staff report, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Tom.
One other question, do we need to add the other two properties into the resolution?
Yeah, we, we probably should identify them
Okay.
purposes of the motion.
That's fair, city, city clerk maybe can pass. Or, I, I, you can read it into the record and see if that's.
Were Rhonda and David, yes?
But the, the addresses.
And the um, Rhonda is at eight fifteen Maryland Drive and David seven fifty nine Maryland Drive.
And.
And that's contention upon compliance by the county.
And to the maker of the motion, the secondary, is that acceptable to read that in?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, now, uh, now I think we can have a roll call.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Scizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Furtado.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye. Uh, and, and, and thank you to all, thank you to those who, who uh, showed up tonight, it's not perfect, but this is democracy. Public process, and I'll look forward to that, um, further work with staff, again, having heard all the comment from uh, from, from colleagues tonight, um, thank you all for that, with that, we move on to item uh, ten.
Would we need to reopen the public hearing?
No.
No, we open. Okay, no, so great, so we're, uh, we're moving on to um, item ten. So this is designation of a city representative for County of Santa Clara Housing Community Development Advisory Committee. And uh, we'll have, um, I think a brief presentation from, oh, uh, from Robbie Swift.
Alright.
Subbing in.
Super brief, yeah. But if our city clerk wanted to present, I will.
No, I thought Eloisa was, sorry.
Uh, very light item, uh, this comes up every year before the council, uh, requests to appoint a city representative to the county commissions, the county housing, uh, commission, housing and community development commission. It's a policy recommending body to the Board of Supervisors concerning the home and city PG funds that the county considers every year. Uh, the city's part of a consortium of cities that works with the county on that funding. Uh, they are expected to meet uh, once a year, they met once last year. And I have nothing to add, thank you.
And, and maybe if I can just add, um, really briefly, uh, um, it was brought to my attention following the appointments, uh, process for committees, that this is one that actually needs to go before the council um, formally for um, for, for a vote, so just to make sure that, that, that is clear. As opposed to being at the discretion of the mayor. Um, so with that, are there questions from uh, council on this item? Uh, no, any one of the public speaking on this item? Um, so um, bring it back to council, um, close public comment, bring it back to council discussion. Um, and maybe start with seeing if, if there are those interested in, in uh, serving.
And they have to represent the city in this manner.
Thank you, uh, and, and, and uh, very much appreciate that, um, do you have anyone willing to serve as alternate?
I, I would be willing to serve as an alternate, but I don't wanna usurp anybody that might also be interested.
I don't think so, so um, not seeing any further discussion, uh, could we get a motion in a second on the item?
I, I would move then that Councilmember Scizola be uh, named the representative and Councilmember Heinz be named the alternate.
Second.
Um, great, uh, we have a motion in a second, I'll just say thank you both very much for your willingness to serve and represent the city, which I know you'll, you'll do well. Uh, clerk, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Scizola.
Rapidly, aye.
Vice Mayor Furtado.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Uh, great, that motion passes and um, thank you, um, all again, my first year I was on that um, committee and um, really enjoyed it, it's a very important issue, um, and, and I thank you for your willingness to serve. Um, that brings us to item eleven, which is to approve the reappointments to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for Measure O. And on this, uh, we have a staff recommendation, um, the city council approved the recommendations of the city management, finance director to reappoint the five members of the Measure Oversight Board and we'll have Fontis with a presentation.
Alright, um, so, um, I'll, I'll just um, go through, um, two uh, e- points, um, The, um, the federal, uh, hover site, um, uh, committee. It's a, um, it's a, a, a part of the, 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 the. It's a part of the requirement, um, to, uh, approve the, uh, bond in eighteen. Um, the, 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 um, a, a group, um, higher, um, a, 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 a job. Is, 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 is to, uh, have you, um, the expenditure of, of the, uh, uh, funds. Um, to do, did, did, determine if, um, if the expenditure of, 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 it's appropriate. Um, the, um, uh, 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 the, uh, the, uh, term of, um, each, um, of, of person, it's a, uh, three year, uh, term. Um, the, um, uh, the, uh, term of the, uh, current, uh, members. Um, it, uh, uh, expired in, uh, this number. Um, so, um, the, uh, uh, council, uh, could choose to. Uh, to, uh, avoid or also, um, to, uh, rate open a, uh, a recruitment. A process to, uh, fill, uh, each. A seat. Um, a, a, a button, each, um, of, a person. On the, uh, on the, uh, each person on the oversight, uh, group. Um, they've, um, done a, a, a job, um, over, over their term. Um, they've, um, come completely, they've completely filled the, uh, 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 duties of the role. Um, so in, 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 in our opinion, um, it will, it, it'd be best, um, to, uh, to, uh, avoid each. A person, um. It, uh, it, it would con- continue to be, um, one person of, from each, uh, each, uh, district. Um, so we, uh, can, can, can continue to, uh, I, I follow the bylaws. Um, and if, um, if, if each, um, a person were, uh, re, uh, uh, re, uh, uh, reappointed. Um, it, uh, I expect, um, that, uh, there, um, a, a, a job and. A role, um, had, um, and in about, um. Years, uh, handsome, the, uh, once, uh, once the bonds are all, uh, spent down. And also, uh, handsome, the, uh, ports on, uh, the, um. Out funds, um, are, are also, uh, better as well. Um, so with that, um, I will, uh, uh, turn over to. A council and if, um, if, if there are any questions.
Oh, uh, thank you. Um, so any, um, comments, uh, or, or questions from council? No, um, not seeing any. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I'll go to, um, public comment. Do you have any wishing to speak on this item? I, okay, closing public comment, uh, back for any council discussion. Or motion. Uh, Councilman Heinz.
Uh, first of all, I wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Director of Fuentes. I was on the, uh, Measure O Committee for the, um, for the duration from its inception. And greatly appreciated, uh, the leadership provided there, uh, getting to know it and enjoyed watching, uh, watching the building very much. Obviously I had to, uh, resign, uh, with this, uh, with this role due to a conflict of interest, which I had provided my resignation letter. So. Um, and, uh, it's fantastic that Ann, uh, continues to wanna, uh, be, uh, the, uh, the District One Representative. So, uh, I would totally support the, uh, the move, uh, to, uh, to this and I would put a, pose a motion to accept the, uh, uh, the, um, the. Attendees, uh, as, uh, as defined in, in the list of Ann. Uh, Ann, Doris, Steve, Paul and Al.
I'll second.
Great. We have a motion in a second. Um, clerk, may, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Councilmember Schizola, thank, thank you all for giving.
I got my thinner solo. I just wanted to give my thanks for, uh, uh, Councilmember Heinz's service in this regard. That's all.
Likewise, thank you. And, and thank you to, um, those who are still willing to, to serve. Um, state clerk, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilmember Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fertado.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, um, Finance Director Wolfantis. Um, so there's no unfinished business for today's meeting and so that brings us to council, uh, committee reports. Um, let's go down the side. Why don't we start with, um, Councilmember Schizola?
All right, uh, so let's start. We, I attended the Country Women's Club of Campbell Crab Feed. It was wonderful. As you can imagine. Imagine there was a lot of crab to feast upon, uh, many other good things there, uh, auctions. It was just, it's always a good time. I had a, a ton of fun there. Uh, okay, so let's see, uh, let's move on to the Campbell Historical Museum and Ainsley House Foundation. So. Uh, it's pretty amazing, actually. I, I started volunteering with them on the board, oh geez, I guess about four years ago. And when I came on, it was, it was just a handful of people, you know, and now I'm happy to say it's, it's a big group now and lots of professional people. Uh, really interesting, amazing things being done. There's a great marketing push that's happening right now, uh, to get more people aware. Of, uh, the Ainsley House as well as our historical museum. Uh, fundraising, uh, obviously has always been, uh, the board's main goal fundraising for preservation. Uh, and so. Uh, last year slightly down, they, they went over the numbers. They were slightly down in, in regards to fundraising. That's only due to the fact that we didn't have our, uh, summer concerts. So I'm really excited. This year it seemed the fall goes well. We have a return to our summer concerts and, and the numbers should go back up again. Uh, there were also recent renovations, renovations to the roof and foundation of the Ainsley House. So always a great thing, uh, preserving history. Uh, next up, I was honored to have been elected to the Vice Chair of ETA PAC. You can go ahead and watch the video. It was, it was, it was contentious as always. No, just kidding. Uh, but, uh, truly an honor. Uh, you know, I just remember, you know, way back, way back in the day, you know, being a high school kid. Uh, riding the bus to and from home, but, um, it's, 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 it's a trip, you know, like, like being there. Oh, wow. Here I am on. The Policy Advisory Committee. So, uh, very honored. Uh, if you cancel, my face is very red. That's how honored I am about that. Uh, and last, we just had our Education Committee meeting today and maybe I'll pass that along over to Ann if she'd like to say some of the things that we spoke about today. Oh, me? Okay. Okay, um, so, uh, reintroducing ourselves. I'm glad that, uh, Councilmember Bybee is, uh, now on the Education Committee with me. Um. I, we're, we're kind of, again, being the first meeting here where we're planning our, our future agenda. There was, uh, an update, but there was an update to, uh, our Parks and Recreation and as you know, we're having the master plan, uh, come about. There are a lot of public meetings being, uh, made regarding the, the whole shebang, but also more specifically coming out. Uh, maybe someone can tell me the exact date, but there is regarding the skate park, which I'm super interested in the, uh, more feedback from the public about what they want and, uh. And basically kind of showing more of the city's vision and, you know, working with, with the community to see if we can, you know, make the, the most perfect skate park that we can. Uh, we also, uh, as the mayor had mentioned previously, there was, uh, some talk about reassuring families, uh, that. Uh, you know, the, our Kiony Santa Clara County, uh, is going by the law. You know, that's what I'm hearing through the grapevine is that. Uh, families should be reassured that they shouldn't expect ICE raids just rounding up random people. That they are only going to go so far as, uh, the actual warrants, you know, for arrests, just actually just targeting single. Uh, criminals that might need, uh, to be deported at that point. So that's a good trend. I love where I live and I, I, I love the fact that I'm hearing this, that. That, uh, hopefully, long story short, uh, we're putting on the agenda for our next topic to try and see how we can reassure the community. Uh, that school is a safe place to be, you know, that you can expect yourself to be safe there as a child, as a family, never picking up your child. You should feel safe there that, yes, it is government technically, but it's not that government that you fear, you know? It, it's a safe space. So I was really happy to hear that. Uh, and last, a lot of, uh, amazing mental health stuff going on, uh, in our education system right now. Uh, it's a little bit complicated. We're still working things out, but, uh, one of the great things is kind of, uh, allowing instead of parents having to. Cross all the way, uh, across town to get to a therapist, to take their child to the therapist after school hours, after work hours, all of that. Now, uh, there's this big push to allow it to happen at the school. So it's almost like an after school program in a way, uh, for lack of better words. Uh, also during school hours. So the after school things being worked on currently is my understanding, but during school hours. Uh, you know, you have access now. There's this direct link method. It's a lot of minute checks I won't go into, but. Basically, long story short, it makes things a lot easier for, uh, children, for, for parents to get their children the, the help that they need when it comes to mental health. At their own school sites. So I'm super excited about that. And with that.
Uh, great. Let's go to Vice Mayor Fertado, please.
Does it also include Morland?
Indeed, one question, yeah. Morland is also involved, uh, and that is. Oh, I kill it. Did I, I, I forget if they have a great, but yes, you, you are.
Oh, I see. Sure. Well, I agree with you that children should feel safe in going to school and education is so important for every child. So. That should not be a factor. They should be able to go to school safely. Yeah. Um, I attended the recent statewide meeting of the California Association of Sanitation Agencies. Um, and it was a very good meeting. Um, more and more is being done, uh, with respect to, um. Recycling, if you will. And, um, so for example, in the wastewater, uh, higher levels of purification, uh, continue. So that that water can actually be put back into the underground aquifers or into the purple pipe system, which, uh, are in some locations that. That waters, uh, plants and trees and lawns and things like that. Um, the sludge is being, uh, treated in such a way, uh, as well that, uh, the gas can be extracted from that. The methane and other gases, uh, biogas, which can then be used to, um, provide electricity as a source of electricity. So the treatment plant in, uh, San Jose, Santa Clara County, one of the largest treatment plants, it had been the largest treatment plant this side of the Mississippi River. Uh, for a long time, I'm guessing it might still have that, uh, that moniker. Um, about eighty percent of their electricity is powered by the treated sludge and the, uh, byproduct of that. Uh, and they only have to rely on P G N E for twenty percent of the electricity. So that's pretty amazing. So, uh, other uses of, of the sludge, uh, include they can isolate, um, hydrogen from that to make hydrogen fuel. Uh, there are companies that do that, uh, that, uh, extract hydrogen for hydrogen fuel, uh, to eventually take the place of diesel. So this whole idea, uh, sort of carries over into solid waste management as well of the whole effort to. Decrease the amount of solid waste that goes into landfills. Um, bulky items are picked up separately and then there are companies that will take those and take them apart and, and recycle them. The, uh, effort is being made likewise, um, with, uh, food waste and, uh, and. And also, uh, you know, our natural clippings and so on, uh, and higher levels of composting, which can be reused. Uh, and the solid waste, uh, likewise, uh, greater efforts towards recycling. Uh, the upcoming budget, uh, for the, uh, solid waste, uh, board will include an additional amount of money for greater education. Educate the public and students, uh, in how they can decrease landfill and, uh. Do some things to, um, promote recycling of a lot of these products. Likewise, in stormwater management, uh, we have another meeting coming up here shortly with that organization. There are higher state levels, uh, in terms of preventing pollutants and other things from getting into, um, the creek system. Uh, and, uh, keeping our creeks, uh, more pure, which are healthy for plants and of course the fish in the creeks. So, um, the, the one question that still comes up with all of these, and it certainly has come up with, uh, the, uh. Sort of wastewater, uh, has to do with, uh, the chemical contaminant, the so-called forever chemicals, PFOS. Uh, polyfluoroalkane, alkane substances, which is a chemical that's, uh, very difficult to destroy. And, um, because wastewater is highly managed by the state, a, a lot of focus is being given to that, but PFOS is found everywhere. And, uh, so it's not necessarily just higher levels of PFOS present, uh, in, uh, in wastewater. Uh, but it's, uh, present in many other things as well. And, uh, it's the, the matter of total amounts and they're still looking into that, uh, which makes it difficult. Uh, but a lot of attention, like I said, is paid to wastewater because it is a state regulated, uh, substance. So. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, go to Councilmember Bybee.
So I, um, attended a couple of meetings of the library, uh, JPA. One, one was the library JPA meeting and then, um. They were very anxious and excited about our grand opening and. Really, uh, on pins and needles wanting that to happen. So that, that was kind of one of the topics of, of discussion. And then they had a, um, uh, annual forum, um, last Saturday where they, uh, all the librarians presented, um. Different programs that each library in the system is, is, um. O- offering in their communities. And there was a really good speaker, um, Ray Nailor, who was an author and he spoke on intelligence and, um. Kind of, uh, talked about, um, the way the world is going and, and, um, how beneficial intelligent, artificial intelligence can be. But it can also, there's also, you know, drawbacks to it, but he was very, very informative, very good. And, um, I attended Savannah, um, a couple of weeks ago and the highlight there was choosing our chair and vice chair for, for the year. And, um, then I also attended Cities Association last week and we talked about, um, priorities, what the priorities are going to be. For, um, twenty twenty-five and we'll be deciding that at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you so much, uh, Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, I, I went to the, uh, Santa Clara Valley Water District, uh, Commission Meeting. Um, very, uh, very well attended, um, really get a, got a good chance to, uh, meet a number of, uh, uh, people around the area, Chuck Page. Um, uh, and, uh, Sylvia, Sylvia Arenas, uh, is the county supervisor, um, representative. So excellent work. The, the big message in that is the, uh, amount of investment that, uh, Valley Water is doing. Um, and the, um, nine percent increase in boss from Valley Water, um, every year, uh, for the foreseeable future. Uh, so, uh, just to look for, see that in your, uh, in your water, uh, your water bills that's coming. Um, I also went to the, uh, Mayor and, uh, Council Members Academy in, uh, Garden Grove. Uh, excellent, uh, excellent review there. Had an opportunity to meet, uh, council members from, and city managers from. Uh, Alchasta to Chula Vista to the Arizona border. So, uh, very quite interesting there. Uh, their advocacy is really going to be, uh, now focused on, uh, four areas, expand economic development. Uh, climate change and disaster planning, uh, critical infrastructure and homelessness and housing. Uh, those are, uh, the advocacy that they're going to, uh, uh, going to be emphasizing. Uh, I also went to the, uh, Country Women's Annual Fundraisers, uh, uh, had a lot of fun there as well. And, uh, that was terrific. Also went to the Campbell Surf Annual, uh, Meeting, uh, that, uh, was just an outstanding turnout that they had there. Uh, and I think that's going to be, uh, an excellent program that, uh, I know that Campbell PD, uh, uh, supports. And it's terrific to see that. Um, I met with Chief Berg, got a great, uh, review of the, uh, Campbell PD Department. Uh, so that was very enjoyable. And then looking forward to the Valley, uh, Stormwater and Wastes and.
Waste, uh, solid waste.
Solid waste, solid waste, uh, enjoying, uh, looking forward to, uh, meeting those and the, uh, as an alternate to the Cal, uh, uh, Santa Clara Cal Cities as well. Looking forward to meeting all those. So very enjoyable discussions, uh, across the board. And, uh, planning to go to, uh, Susan Eller's, uh, State of the District, uh, coming up as well.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for representing us, um, at, at cert. I was sorry I missed that, um, at the last minute, but I heard we're well represented.
Yeah.
Um, I, I had the pleasure of attending the U S Conference of Mayors, um, in, in D C. Um, I, I can share that, that I did in fact get stuck in inauguration, uh, traffic on the way back and, uh, missed my flight. But luckily we were able to get that switched up, um, with, with no problem, as you can imagine, a lot of other people having those issues. Um, but really great, great event. Um, everything from, um, uh, President Biden announcing the ERA. To, um, a couple of highlights for me was attending, um, uh, working sessions, uh, one on FIFA, um, for twenty twenty-five. But for us in particular, twenty twenty-six, um, as, as one of the host regions and, and something that we'll be looking at and that our economic development. Um, planning consultants have, have looked at, um, as well as, um, very timely for, for some of, uh, comments today. Um, uh, you, you know, and again, this, this was just barely with the last administration, um, looking ahead to, uh. Lessons learned, what we're already hearing from policy and legal challenges and what we could expect. Um, so e- extremely informative, um, discussions all around and, um, it reminds me to follow up and, and. Um, I think the intention was to share those, um, resources and presentations and PowerPoint. So, um. If I get them, I'll, I'll definitely share with, with, um, staff and if we're able to, to definitely, uh, send with council if we have them. Um, I also, um, flew back from that to attend the, um, uh, policy committees. Uh, I'm the Santa Clara Representative to Housing Community and Economic Development Committee for the League of California Cities. Um, so went up to attend Sacramento and, um, also as Vice President of the Peninsula Division Board of Directors. Um, hosted, um, a, a social event for, um, those who are also there for the new mayors, um, and manager, uh, and, um, Council Members Academy. And, um, I appreciate having our city manager stop by and attend that as, as well as very well received. Um, also, um, with the Peninsula Division of the League of Cities, we hosted our legislative, um, event. And thank you Councilmember Schizola for attending. It was a great event. And, um, if you haven't seen it, check out the follow up email because we, we had some really great photos and, and photographer capturing. Um, all the fun, but, uh, really, uh, great hearing, um, from five, uh, legislators, which, um, was the highest that, that we've had. So that continues to be a really good event. And, um, I'll encourage folks, those are really geared at sharing resources and information with council members and, and, um. Uh, kind of an intimate environment. So, um, we'll, we'll, look out, um, for, for those events that will have coming up. Um, also attended the West Valley Mayors and Managers Meeting where we kind of talked about setting the topics, um, for the year and. Um, one thing that was on everybody's mind was, um, fire and disaster preparedness. And so, um, along with other things like. Congestion management, uh, transportation, other things that I'm sure we'll be talking about. Um, also hosted, um. What will be a monthly series of mayor's office hours. So, so thank you so much, uh, um, um, all the, 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 the staff. Um, uh, who, who made that happen. We met right here in the chambers. Um, had I think about five people, um, uh, show up and ask questions on all kinds of topics. Uh, it was really great, uh, turning it kind of a round table, free ranging discussion, which is a lot of fun. So. So look out for more of those. We'll be varying up the hours and, and the time, just to try to make sure it works for different people's schedules and seeing what works. Um, but it's um, really just a, a, you know, it's hard for a lot of folks to attend a council meeting at, at seven PM uh, on a, uh, on a work night, and so just looking for other ways to get out there and answer questions we want. Um, also attended the Board Retreat of what used to be the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and there's always a mouthful to say when I had to give these committee reports. Um, so I'm thrilled to report that it's now changed to the Bay Area Air District, which um, rolls off the tongue. Just don't, don't try abbreviating that, yeah. Um, but uh, really great, the best, um, some of the best panel discussions that I've had, including things um, like a just transition from fossil fuels um, to green energy future, but really concretely, what does that look like for working um, uh, families in blue collar jobs? Uh, not an easy discussion, but important one. Um, and on uh, something that's near and dear to my heart, which is the role that um, technology and um, different types of um, investments can do in um, getting us to that future as well. Um, so really interesting. If anyone's interested, I'd encourage you to reach out and happy to share some of the materials in, in discussion there. Um, also grateful to um, our Campbell PD. Congratulations to our two new sworn officers. Um, and was also glad to attend the, the awards, and great to see Councilmember Bybee um, uh, there as well um, in recognizing things from um, our Officer of the Year to the, 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 um, the um, uh, Worker Downtown, um, I, I think our two who caught the Water Tower Vandal um, and, and all these things, and um, other big police incidents um, throughout the time. So thank you to our, to our PD for continuing to do a, a, a great job serving our community. Um, a- again, in keeping with some of the topics that I heard, I attended um, Cafe Cito, which is kind of a monthly um, speaker series that West Vaughn High School does. Um, and so I was invited to speak at um, eight forty-five on, on a Friday morning. Um, with about thirty parents of um, kids in the district, um, all, all grades, um, primarily Spanish speakers. Um, who again, just had a lot of anxieties, and there's just a lot of misinformation uh, rumors out there. Um, and I, I, I shared my experience, which was of growing up and being welcomed, and this community coming from an immigrant family. Um, and what our values are uh, for our community, and um, it, it, I think it goes a long way, and just as I encourage you as um, you all hear questions, um, just to direct them to um, something I spoke about a lot, Office of um, of Immigrant Resources um, at the county, which does a great job, um, but also just reaffirming that the um, commitment and, and our policies here at the city. Um, and um, I'll, I'll wrap there, so I don't completely keep going all night, but um, really, really appreciate um, just the, the follow-up on that topic and others from, from staff. So if, um, yes, go ahead, uh, Councilman Heinz.
Yeah, I just wanted to shout out to the residents that lost everything at the Union Manor Fire. Uh, there was a horrendous uh, fire. Um, Mary and I heard it, and uh, it just was a, a really um, uh, tremendous traumatic for a number of residents. Um, and then shout out to Fire and PD, Red Cross, uh, Community Development, and uh, Tammy Martin, the property manager, uh, helping personally uh, for them. So uh, very traumatic to a, a large number of uh, residents that in Union Manor.
Thank you, and, and, and my own neighbors, and we, we recognize also the four police officers who saved lives at, at that event, and so thank you to our PD for their dedication. Um, with that, I, I think uh, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you everyone so much for, for coming. Appreciate you.